This conference will now be recorded.
The Wednesday, January 4th, 2023, South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners meeting. This is our first meeting of the new year. I want to wish everyone a very happy and healthy new year. I'm going to call this meeting to order. We have all commissioners present this evening. If you'd all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Pride of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to announce that all public sessions of the South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners are electronically recorded, filed, and posted to our website for public access. I'm going to turn this over to Tom Petrucci, our township manager, to please review our public virtual meeting rules.
Thank you. The Hubbard meeting rules are as follows. Courtesy of the floor for non-agenda items will be at the beginning and end of the agenda. Public comment will be limited to five minutes per speaker. For all listed agenda items, the board president will call for courtesy of the floor prior to the Board of Commissioners taking action on that specific agenda item. For in-person attendees, please raise your hand to be recognized, then move to the podium when directed. You will be asked to state your name and address for the record, and may then proceed with asking your question. For those participating virtually, please mute your microphone or telephone to avoid any background noise that may cause interference in the meeting. The chat box feature will be active throughout the meeting. If you have a comment or question, please type your full name and address into the chat box. The staff member monitoring GoToMeeting will then unmute your microphone, and you will have the opportunity to comment or ask a question. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. There are no executive sessions from the Board of Commissioners to announce this evening. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Four, Courtesy of the Floor. If there's anyone present either here in person or online who would like to address the board on any non-agenda items, now would be your opportunity to do so. Hearing and seeing none, moving on to the approval of our meeting minutes. They've been distributed to the board. They're from our December 21st, 2022 Board of Commissioners meeting. Are there any comments or questions from the board? I did have one question on the year-end reports. I noticed that there was the attachment for the Green, I'm sorry, Greenwald's Fire Company, but Woodlawn's was not attached, and they did distribute a year-end report to us. Is that something that I can just get you a copy and we can attach? Okay, I figure that. Okay, so we can attach it. Excellent, very good. Okay, so if there's no questions, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Just a note, I want to thank Tracy Fennel for the preparation of the meeting minutes. They're very accurate and professional. I appreciate that you included the year-end department reports in our meeting minutes. They will be posted to our website, so if anyone in the community is interested, you can review the different reports for what work was accomplished during this year. Thank you, Tracy. Moving on to presentations, we have a new employee. We the introduction of our Public Works Group Leader, Matthew Miller, and I'm going to turn this over to our township manager, Tom Petrucci, for presentation.
Thank you. On behalf of the township, I am pleased to introduce Matthew Miller, who is in attendance. Matthew, could stand up. He is the new group leader for the Streets Division of the Public Works Department. He has over 15 years of experience in working in a public works capacity. Prior to his arrival here, he was employed by the City of Allentown as a maintenance supervisor, and he began his employment with the township in the fall. Mr. Miller has already demonstrated a strong work ethic and aptitude, and Herb Bender, Director of Township Operations, and I are happy to have him onboard. Please extend a warm welcome to Matthew.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you to everybody for the opportunity. I really enjoy working here. All the guys in Public Works have been great so far, and just seeing you guys deal with the employees is a breath of fresh air. I'm not used to seeing that, you know, from where I come from. It's a little harder, but you guys are, treat everybody with respect.
Thank you very much, Matthew. We appreciate that, and welcome to the township. We look forward to working with you. Thank you. At this time, can we take a moment for a picture? I would love to have a photo with Herb and Tom. Sorry, Herb. We'll do from the waist up. Thank you very much.
Matthew, if you want to be anything like Herb, it'll be bashful. You'll be afraid to say anything in public. Welcome aboard.
Very good. Moving on to Agenda Item Seven, ordinances. We have for direction and discussion tonight, said ordinance followed by motion to advertise, an ordinance of the Township of South Whitehall, County of Lehigh, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, amending Part One Administrative Legislation, Chapter Seventeen, Boards, Commissions, Councils, and Departments, Article Two, Park and Recreation Board of the Codified Ordinances of South Whitehall Township, to amend and restate in its entirety the Park and Recreation Board ordinance of South Whitehall Township, and providing for a repealer clause, severability clause, and effective date. I'm going to turn this over to Tom Petrucci.
Thank you. So this is in reference to following up with the direction that the board had given me during the December 7th Board of Commissioners meeting. The Board of Commissioners had asked me to revise the draft ordinance in order to clarify the duties and responsibilities of the Park and Recreation Board. So in order to clarify the advisory role of the Park and Recreation Board, suggested revisions to Chapter Seventeen Point Ten of the existing Park and Recreation Board are summarized as follows. In lieu of reading the ordinance word for word, I'll basically just give a high-level overview that the ordinance confirms that the role of the Park and Recreation Board is to advise the Board of Commissioners and the Township Manager on public policy matters relating to the acquisition, development of organizations scheduling, maintenance, and operation of all park and recreation areas and associated facilities within the township. Also directs the Park and Recreation Board to conduct periodic reviews of the existing recreational program of the township in relation to the needs and desires of the citizens of the township to study and report to the Board of Commissioners and Township Manager on the feasibility of proposed recreational programs to be conducted by the township or jointly by the township and the school district or other municipalities. Park and Recreation Board should make full and complete analysis, studies, and reports to the Board of Commissioners and/or the Township Manager at such times as may be designated or requested by the board, which would aid in effectuating the purposes of the recreational program. And then also, one difference from the last version, this directs the Park and Recreation Manager to prepare a summary annual report of all activities and milestone accomplishments of the recreational program of the township no later than November 1st, and then it would be forwarded to the Board of Commissioners and Township Manager. I have it here as December 15th. I actually believe it should probably be December 1st to make sure we account for all meetings in December. And then in between November 1st and December 1st, the Park and Recreation Board would essentially approve that review and approve that report. So those are the major changes from last time. Does the board have any questions?
I do have one question. I believe in the old language of the Township Code, Section Seventeen Eleven, where it says two of the members shall be appointed by the Parkland School District Board and then confirmed by the township. In the new draft ordinance, it just says all seven residents be appointed by the Board of Commissioners. So are we kind of moving away from having the two and the five, or is it just a group of seven? Or what would the relationship between the?
So the First Class Township Code, that's a good question. The First Class Township Code says you can have either five or seven members on your rec board. The township's previous ordinance had indicated that two of those members would be appointed by Parkland School District. However, the First Class Township Code does not provide for that action to occur. So in this case, you would have seven members who are residents, and they would all be appointed by the Commissioners. Now, they can certainly be residents and affiliated with the Parkland School District in some way, but the final appointment would be by the Board of Commissioners.
Excellent. And then my only other comment would be, thank you, Tom, for putting this together. And I think as we review other volunteer boards and commissions, I think this is an excellent framework for approaching those other boards.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would agree. Commissioner Roth, I want to thank you, Tom, for this revision and update. It really does streamline our ordinance for the Park and Rec Board. We have a robust recreation and parks program here in the township, and I think your consideration of this will be helpful for that board as we move forward. So I want to thank you for that. And I thank you for clarifying the date that the report will be given to the Board of Commissioners and the manager being December 1st. I'm in agreement with that so that we could include that year-end report in our last meeting of the year. It will be very helpful for the board, so thank you.
Thank you. I just have a quick comment, Tom, if I may. Prior to your arrival, actually several months ago, we did have a very active Parkland School Board. It wasn't a school board. An employee ran building and grounds. However, he was not resident of South Whitehall, and he had been removed from the Park and Rec, unfortunately. So I would just encourage us to reach out to Parkland to try to have someone, either, I doubt if it would be some of their board, they've got quite a few meetings, but a faculty member, somebody on their building and grounds, who is a South Whitehall resident, try to come into that committee. I think it'd be beneficial for the township and for the school district.
Well understood. Thank you.
Just for clarification, Commissioner Kennedy, we do have two Parkland representatives on the board right now.
Right, yeah, I know we do now, yes.
Right, so yeah, thank you. Any other board comment?
I do have a comment, actually a question for clarification. As I'm looking at this new ordinance and the new verbiage, I'm wondering, this past year, we were working on the prop plan, and we had each of our playgrounds assessed, you know, for safety, age, so forth, appropriateness. I was wondering, is the Parks and Rec Board going to continue to do this? Who will monitor the physical safety and aesthetics of our playgrounds?
I view that as an operational issue for myself, Herb Bender, and the Parks and Rec Recreation Manager. I view that as more administrative in nature, that that is something we should be doing to ensure that we are meeting our requirements for liability purposes.
Great, thank you.
Any other board comment? Anything from the public? Hearing and seeing none. Do I have a motion to proceed with the motion to advertise for said ordinance?
I make a motion.
Second.
Motion is second on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item Eight. We have resolutions. We have a resolution amending Resolution 2022-69, Designating Depositories for Township Funds. And I will turn this over. Tom, will you be handling this?
Yes, thank you.
Sorry.
Okay, so Resolution 2022-69 was just passed not too long ago, but since we are starting a new fiscal year, it makes sense, and we're actually required to list all of our depositories for this fiscal year in a new resolution. They are before you. We did add a couple that were not on the list before, including, actually, I think it was just one addition, Nationwide Trust Company houses our pension funds. And we had recently added Univest as well in the fall, who are now housing our liquid money market accounts in which we're earning a much higher interest rate. So with that, I would seek a motion to approve the resolution.
Thank you, Tom. Are there any board questions or comments? Any from the public? Hearing and seeing none. Do I have a motion to approve said resolution?
So moved.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you, Tom. Moving on to Resolution B. We have a resolution for all professional services firms. Motion to extend all professional service firms to serve at the pleasure of the Board of Commissioners for an unspecified contract term. And I'll call on Tom Petrucci again to present.
Thank you. So there are separate resolutions listed for all of the township's current professional services firms. They are as follows. Township Solicitor, Joseph Zader II, Zader Law Offices. Alternate Township Solicitor, James Brockle from Brockle Individo. Civil Service Commission Solicitor is Eckert Siemens. Pension Committee Solicitor is Eckert Siemens. Labor Council is Eckert Siemens. Additional Alternate Township Solicitor, Mark Cappuccio, Esquire. Building Codes Appeals Board Solicitor is Lawrence B. Fox. Township Tax Appeal Hearing Officer is Lawrence B. Fox. Township Engineer is the Pidcock Company. Alternate Township Engineers Keystone Consulting Engineers. Sewage Enforcement Officer is Keystone Consulting Engineers. Geotechnical Engineer is Hanover Engineering. Alternate Sewage Enforcement Officer is Hanover Engineering. Utility Engineer is Spot Stevens and McCoy. Third-party Residential Inspectors Barry Isaac and Associates. And the third-party Commercial Inspector is Keycodes Inspection Agency. So with that being said, there are no major changes from last year. If the board wanted to take this as one whole group, unless Attorney Zader sees an issue with that, I would be, if the board is inclined to do that, I would seek a motion to approve the resolutions in one bulk action.
There is no legal impediment to doing it all in one fell swoop.
So with that, I'll ask if there's any questions for any particular reappointments. If there are, please indicate as such. If not, I would recommend you take it in one full swoop.
Thank you, Tom. Any board discussion?
I just comment, it was a great idea of having everybody come earlier and bringing their proposals to the board ahead of time, so we didn't do it all tonight. And I think we had a chance to study them and look at them carefully before tonight. So thank you for that.
Thank you. We intend to do that going forward.
Good point, Commissioner Kennedy. Thank you. Any other board discussion? Okay, if none, do I have a motion to approve with said resolution?
So moved.
Second.
The motion is second on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Moving on to Resolution C, a resolution to amend the fee schedule. Have a good evening. Thank you. A resolution to amend the fee schedule for administrative fees, non-residential building fees, non-residential electrical fees, non-residential plumbing fees, residential building fees, residential electrical fees, residential plumbing fees, other permit fees, public work fees, police department fees, subdivision or land development fees, and non-subdivision or land development fees, and to provide for a general repealer, severability clause, and effective date. And I'm going to turn it over to our Community Development Planner, Greg Adams.
Yeah, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna give a high-level summary, and then we're gonna basically go into each major change by department. So basically, the township has a unified fee schedule, which was first implemented by Mr., under the direction of Mr. Adams, back in 2013. And the township needs to update its fee schedule year to year. So the last time you did this was January 19th, 2022. For 2023, each department did go through and update their fees as necessary. There are some incremental changes. There are some more substantive changes, as you can imagine, with costs going up this year and inflation and so forth. The first change I wanted to review is actually the fee for the Police Department, their hourly rate. So basically, sorry, their hourly overtime rate is now just one fee, and it is $80 and change. Sorry, I lost my place on it. Before, it was not a uniform, it's $80.75 per hour on page six of 10 of the fee schedule. We are now charging that fee to all entities as opposed to one fee for another. So we believe that is more consistent with how procedurally it should occur. That's the only change major for the Police Department. Lieutenant Brown, do you have any other additions? I don't believe there are any other. Okay. Any questions on that? Okay. While I'm going through fees, I would like to highlight the alarm fees under Schedule E, also on page six of 10. That is the new fee schedule pursuant to ordinance 1067 that was adopted late last year. So that is for any false alarms, nuisance alarm fees for each occurrence. So that is broken out by residential police, commercial police, residential fire, and commercial fire. For residential police, one to two incidences, there's no charge. Three to four is $25. Five to six is $75. Seven plus is $125. Commercial police charges is $0.1 to two. Three to four is $100. Five to six, $200. Seven plus is $300. And it follows this, I'm sorry, it's a little bit different for fire. I'll go through those as well. So residential fire, one to two incidents is $0. Three to four is $100. Five through six is $150. Seven plus is $200 each. Commercial fire, one to two, $0. Three to four, $300. Five to six, $400. Seven plus is $500. And again, that's consistent with the ordinance that you adopted last year. Any questions on that? Okay, with that being said, I will now turn it over to Greg Adams to go through community development fees.
Okay, thank you, Tom. Actually, I'm also going to cover, I'm gonna do some of Herb's work here. I will start in reverse order with the Public Works Department, simply because there are two changes in there, small ones, but the first one is on page eight of 10 of the fee schedule, and that mirrors the police overtime. Previously, we had been charging two different rates for Public Works labor operators, one for Parkland School District, one for normally our rate. That has now been consolidated into one rate. And on page 10 of 10, there was a little note at the bottom of the Parks and Rec, charging $50 an hour for any cleanup for township staff. That has been removed and is replaced by a reference to the PW later labor operator hourly rate back on page eight of 10, which I just discussed. Any questions to those two? Then I'll move to the community development, which are the final changes proposed. Basically, the first one is on page three of 10. That's in Schedule C, Special Permit Fees. We're removing the escrow amounts for on-lot sewage systems, either replacements or newer replacement or repair. And then finally, the meat of the change is on Schedule D, which is page four of 10. We are implementing a completeness review for all land development applications. This is something new. We're starting this year. We are hoping to get better applications in doing this. However, we would like to charge a $50 fee for that initial review. So that is across the board in all land development applications. And then in order to deal with the increased costs, both from staff, postage and handling, and advertising over the past two years, raising the application and resubmission fees for selected land developments applications. And those are listed on page four of 10. Any questions with those? Hearing none. The final bit is on page five of 10, and these are escrow amounts that will be increased. We increased selected escrow amounts within the non-subdivision land development fees and escrows, mainly because we were told that anytime we open up an account of less than $2,500, the bank charges us a fee for that. So in order to get rid of those fees, we're simply raising all escrow requirements that were below $2,500 to the minimum of $2,500. So any questions there? I believe that covers it. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Greg, and thank you, Tom, for presenting the changes. Are there any other questions or comments from the board at this time? Any from the public? Hearing and seeing none. Do I have a motion to approve said resolution? I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
No second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item D. We have a resolution affixing compensation of emergency management coordinator for South Whitehall Township. And I'll call on our township manager again, Tom Petrucci.
Thank you. So this is also following up on a previous board meeting. So during the course of the discussions pertaining to the 2023 budget, a discussion occurred regarding the consideration of the Board of Commissioners adjusting the annual compensation of the emergency management coordinator. That position's currently set at $2,000 per year. The board approved adjusting the line item in the 2023 budget, which is now approved, to $5,000 per year, with the understanding that the matter would need to go before the Board of Commissioners for subsequent and final approval via resolution. The board had also asked me to obtain benchmarking comparison data for the compensation paid to the position in the local area for similar municipalities. I did obtain that data, and it is included within the memorandum. To summarize it, basically, there's no hard and fast rule as to how this is done. Some municipalities incorporate the position into another full-time position with no extra compensation. Others, the township manager is the emergency management coordinator. Others have a set annual fee, like South Whitehall Township. Others, it's a volunteer position with no compensation. So it's in the budget for 5,000. It's really a board discretionary item as to whether you want to adjust it.
Thank you, Tom. I will recuse myself from this discussion, as the emergency management coordinator is my husband, Jeff Kelly. But I will open the floor to any questions or comments from the board.
I just have a quick comment. I've known Jeff for probably 20 years. Actually, I knew his father, who was on Public Safety when I started 25 years ago. And when his father gave up the position, Jeff took it over. Jeff is at every meeting. I guess rarely does he miss. I don't want to say, you know, he never misses, but he has done so much for South Whitehall Township, I think. That's really behind the scenes that you don't see. It's something that, God forbid, you know, he's there when you need him, for whatever reason. If it's hurricanes, storms that come through, snowstorms, I see Herb Bender and Greg Adams shaking their head. I think they realize it. Some of the public won't see it, you know, and maybe they're fortunate that they're not in a position where they need to see it. But it's those that do need him and his people. He's there, I will tell you that. And goes above and beyond for South Whitehall Township. And his compensation, whatever it was, 25, has been fixed for, I guess, quite a while. And I certainly would be definitely in favor of increasing his compensation to $5,000. I know also that he's taken money from his stipend and has done, purchased things for the township for activities in the park or things like that, that he's used some of his funds for. So I certainly would recommend the board consider a compensation increase to $5,000. Well deserved for Jeff.
I'd also like to make a comment. I do agree with the increase, and thanks, Commissioner Kennedy. Well said. When disasters strike, we see our emergency services at work, but they're at work throughout the entire year. It's ongoing, and even when we don't see them, they're still working. So I am in full support of this raise.
Just to piggyback on what Commissioner Hodges and Commissioner Kennedy have said, not just when disaster strikes, but whenever there's the chance that we may have an inclement weather problem, an emergency situation, Jeff and the entire emergency management team are ready to go. They are prepared, and the work that they do that the public doesn't see certainly doesn't go unnoticed by the board and township and any residents who've utilized any of the emergency management services. So I would also be in favor of increasing the stipend. And I know Jeff does a lot of the work that he does because he's passionate about emergency management. He's passionate about our community. So I think increasing the stipend is not a problem, in my opinion. So I think increasing the stipend is, is not a problem, in my opinion.
Any other board, Chris Osborne?
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. I wish Jeff were here this evening. I know if this were an emergency, he would be here. But I'd like to start out by saying that sometimes as elected official, decisions are hard and some decisions are easy. For me personally, this is easy. And I'd like to, Jeff, if you're listening or if you watch the tape back, I'd like to express to you some of the things that I think about, Commissioner Kelly, your husband, in the service to our, not only our community, but also that of the region. Jeff is a consummate professional. He's selfless in his commitment to providing emergency assistance when needed. He's always available. He's recognized not only in South Whitehall, but also countywide as a leader, organizer, and someone who can be counted on. One of the things that I would like to close with is this. When, when I was a South Whitehall Township Commissioner back in 2012, that's when I first got to know Jeff and what he did for our township. Jeff is grateful for the support that he gets. This is an opportunity for our board tonight to show Jeff our gratefulness for what he does for our community. But Jeff gave me this, didn't need to, and I'd just like to read it to you. Is Emergency Management honors Brad Osborne in grateful recognition and appreciation for distinguished service to South Whitehall Emergency Management. It's dated January 19, 2012. And if it's taken 11 years, less two weeks for us as a township to show Jeff Kelly how much he means to us, then tonight's the night. I'm in full support of this.
Thank you all for your comments. You're very kind. At this time, if there's no other board comment, is there any public comment? Okay, hearing and seeing none, is there a motion to approve said resolution?
So move.
Motion.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I will recuse myself. Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero with one recusal. Moving on to agenda item E, we have a resolution appointing Key Codes Inspection Agency as a temporary code enforcement officer for South Whitehall Township. And I'll call on our Community Development Department Director, David Manhart, to present.
So this is a, basically a renewal of an order, a resolution we passed last year, appointing Key Codes as an alternate code enforcement officer. This is to provide coverage if our code enforcement officer is going out on medical leave. And it's anticipated that that will be happening again this year. So we figured this was a good time to go ahead and get this on the books.
Very good. Thank you, Dave. Anything board comment or question on this resolution? Anything from the public? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to approve said resolution?
So moved.
Motion in a second on the floor, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Moving on to agenda item F, direction and discussion, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of South Whitehall Township to adopt a formal policy entitled South Whitehall Township Appointment Policy for Advisory Boards, Committees, Commissions, and Councils. I will again ask our township manager, Tom Petrucci, to present.
Thank you. I do, first of all, I'd like to clarify, I'm not requesting any official action from the Board of Commissioners concerning this agenda item tonight. I'm simply asking for your input and feedback on the draft policy as currently written. So I'd like to ensure that the policy is consistent with the goals and objection, objectives of the board concerning this subject matter. This was something I took upon myself. I don't know there was any direction to do it. I wanted to try to formalize the policy that, that the board has been pretty much following since, since I've been here in terms of appointing to any voluntary boards, committees, commissions, and councils, which, you know, to, for ease of reference, can be referred to as citizen advisory boards. So I'd like to give an executive summary of the key provisions of the policy. It provides for maintaining a database of current members. It provides for maintaining a database of applicants to citizen advisory boards. It establishes the notification process for expiring and/or vacant citizen advisory board positions on an annual basis so that the board is aware when these terms are expiring. It establishes that all expiring, expiring and/or vacant advisory board positions will be advertised for notice of availability in order to promote the principles of inclusion, I'm sorry, the principle of inclusion, and afford opportunities to other potential applicants. Clarifies that incumbent members of citizen advisory boards need not submit a new application for consideration of a reappointment, but will be required to interview before the Board of Commissioners. Confirms that all interviews of applicants will be conducted during public regular meetings of the board, and that the commissioners will utilize a panel interview format. And finally establishes a suggested minimum criteria for the selection, nomination, and appointment of applicants. Like I said, I'm not asking for official action. I would just like your feedback. If there's revisions that need to be made, I can make them and come back at a future meeting.
Thank you, Tom. I appreciate you bringing this to the board and memorializing the process that we have been utilizing. I appreciate that it's in writing, and we hope to continue operating in a public forum the way that we do with our boards and commissions. Thank you. Any board comments?
I think it's a great idea, Tom. As Commissioner Kelly said, it memorializes what we've done, what we should continue to do, and now we have it in black and white.
There? Comment?
Yep. Thank you. Commissioner Ross, you want to go first?
Oh, you can go first.
Okay. All right. I have a number of items. You asked for feedback, right, Tom?
Yes, I did.
Okay, so I have some, some comments and then one question. But first, I'd like to, I'm sorry to do this. Subject verb agreement in the first sentence. You have it right elsewhere in the document, but the board being a collective noun, probably verbs should be has and not have.
Oh, wow. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. All right.
That's the fly on the moon, Lisa, right there, right?
More substantial.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
Yeah. I appreciate that.
Okay. Page two, two B. I'm going to ask the question because I could be wrong here. But we talk about 100 and at least 120 days notice prior to the term of service expiration date. Then that's in A. Then in B, we talk about an example. If a term is set to expire on December 31, notification would be provided to Board of Commissioners no later than, in writing, no later than April 30. But that's well before 120 days. Am I missing something there?
No. I think I was just trying to give an example. I can make it exactly 120 days. I was saying it has to be at least 20, 120 days.
Right.
So you could do it before.
August.
You could do it before August. You could do it. I'll make it closer to 120 days. I see your point. Yeah.
Great, thank you. I just.
Yeah, it doesn't say it has to be 120 days. It just says it has to be at least 120 days.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. I'd be interested in that clarification if it, if it has value.
That makes sense. Thank you.
On page four. So I have a number of questions. This would be under five, Roman numeral five, B. So it's referred to as a panel format. So I just wanted to make sure that I understand what you mean by panel format or what is meant by panel format.
So that each board member would have the opportunity to have a list of questions that you would then ask the applicant. The applicant would be asked the questions one by one. But that you wouldn't have like a committee of the board, you wouldn't have a designated person asking the questions. You would have the whole board interview the person. But you would, you would ask them one by one.
Great, thank you. And that, that was the reason for my question. If you meant by the word panel, a subset or a committee, like an interview committee, then, but that's not what this is meant.
No, and I can clarify that as well, that I mean, the board as a whole. Yes.
Okay. As in public meetings, in order for the board to, to conduct a meeting in, in public, we need a minimum number of commissioners physically present, that being three, the majority of the board. Is this anticipated to be a requirement for interviews? That at least three commissioners appear physically in person in order for the interview to be conducted?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that's the intent of this policy.
Okay. Should we clarify that? Or do you think it's sufficiently clear?
I can make it even more clear. Yeah, I think the intent was to have the board collectively interview, but I can make sure that that's, that that is. So the way I did clarify was in 5A, where I said.
5A.
All public special meetings shall be conducted in accordance with the requirements of the Commonwealth Pennsylvania Sunshine laws and amendments. That was the intent there. What I will do is add a sentence that, that a quorum needs to be met for the meeting.
Okay, thank you. And that then clarifies that that panel is met, the whole board then, as well?
Yes.
Okay. There's no reference that I could see that these interviews are going to be recorded. Is that anticipated or, or not?
I didn't put, I purposely didn't put that in the policy because I would leave that at the discretion of the board that may change from time to time, unless you feel it needs to be in there as a board.
Yeah, really, it's just a question. It's a public meeting of the board, but I'm.
The thought process I had was you may or may not be doing that in the future. I'm assuming you will, but you may not.
Okay. What does the rest of the board think? I mean, one of the values of that is that maybe if a commissioner is not able to attend the interview, they can go back and look at the interviews. It's just a question, though.
The reason I hesitate to say that is because if we're interviewing an individual, okay, and someone is outside, listening to the questions that we ask that person, which we have to ask other people, they're going to know the answer. They're going to, they're the response of the individual we're interviewing. And I don't think that's fair to anybody that we interview.
You actually anticipate my next point.
I've seen it happen. I personally, not here. And it has created quite a, quite a controversy.
Can we record it? Do we, would, to address your point, which I agree with, can we record it but not live stream it? Wouldn't be a live, live recording.
I think, I think you certainly could do that technically.
For the future.
For the future.
Could always do that. Do that.
Mm-hmm. Is that something that we want to include in the body here or, or address that as time passes?
I mean, I personally would suggest that that's a board discretion item. We don't, the recording and live streaming of meetings is born from COVID, and we don't know five years from now if that will maintain itself. I just feel like this board has certainly kept up with the law and the practice of doing that, but.
I think Brad does put it, bring up a good point, though, in terms of that if you all can't physically attend, which does happen and has happened for these types of interviews, that it would help with ensuring that these can be processed in a timely manner.
That'd be the board discretion, or are we going to require it? That would be my question, I think.
I think you could write it, the board may record meetings as determined to be necessary.
I would agree with that language.
Just an observation, which in part is a question. I don't recall specifically, but if the board already has a resolution in place, a document in place that addresses how public meetings are recorded or not recorded, that would apply here because this is per section 5A, a public meeting. So if you're looking to have something different, you'd want to be very clear about that in 5A.
Do we have that currently?
That's why I in part asked it as a question. I remember it being discussed some time back, but I cannot recall what the ultimate decision was.
Okay, so what I will do is review that in the interim and then make sure it's consistent with that. Or it could simply just reference that policy that the meeting will be, the meeting, the interviews will be conducted in accordance with the meeting policy as adopted by the Board of Supervisors or whatever its title. Does that make sense?
I would just observe, though, given the dialogue a moment ago, if the intent is to avoid live streaming and that policy or resolution that was adopted at some point in the past calls for live streaming, and you don't want that here, you wouldn't be very clear about that diversions from the norm.
Okay.
Yeah, the other thing, Tom, is I believe it does include for the chat feature also, for the public. So we can look at it, but I think we're going to have to structure it a little different for this.
Okay. All right.
I don't know what the current documents state, but I know having listened to interviews myself, it would appear as though the current practice is to live stream interviews. But the interviews, if they're held in, say, a special meeting of the board or workshop of the board, are not necessarily posted along with, on the YouTube channel, along with other VOC meetings. So I don't know if, if that practice was born out of a specific document or if that's just a practice the board has used, but.
Having talked through this a little bit, if we're not going to live stream it, then the public cannot attend virtually.
Correct.
Which kind of contradicts a little bit about verbiage in here that, that the public can attend, they just can't comment or ask questions.
So we might have to amend both policies or make one consistent with the other. So I will research that and come back.
Great. That leads into actually the question that Commissioner Kennedy brought up, which was my next one, can applicants attend the interviews of other applicants? I think we should have some kind of policy stated there so it's not arbitrary, it's not a surprise, and applicants can honor this policy if they're aware of it. Just a thought. Dave, you have something you want to say?
That's just the danger of live streaming it. You could have, like Commissioner Kennedy's point earlier, you could have an applicant sitting out in the lobby, streaming it on their phone, listening to all the questions. But it's something else to consider with the live stream.
Well, maybe one of the interview questions was, did you, did you listen, see the live screen?
I think this is just something that maybe needs more research only because it's, it's not just the interviewing of candidates. It's also a public meeting where the public, including those who may be interviewed in the future, has a right to attend. So it's something I think that needs a little more clarification.
My next point, thank you. I think that was a good discussion. And certainly, I think it's important, you know, that we address this upfront so that we're not trying to address this when the time comes. But so Roman numeral five, C, members of the public may observe the interview process but not directly participate in asking applicants questions. We talked about that. This document talks about, this is a, an open meeting held by the Board of Commissioners in public, and it describes basically the panel. But my question is this. Do we, as a board, want to allow for the possibility for the township manager to participate as an interviewer and/or the township manager's designee? Or do we, and/or do we want the chair of the committee that's being interviewed for to be a participant of the interview? Those are two questions. They're not addressed in here, but I think they're both important depending on the views of our board. I certainly, I will say this. I respect the accumulated knowledge, experience, certainly decision making of several of the chairs, of our volunteer boards. I know zoning hearing board gets paid a stipend. But I think it's, it would be valuable to have at least the chair's input or the chair's designee as part of the decision making process in some way. They don't make the decision, but, but I think their questions can be better at times than our questions.
It did have in there for incumbent appointees that the recommendations would be sought from chairpersons and staff. But it doesn't have anything in there for new appointees, to your point.
Right.
So that would be up to the board.
Right.
I think it's valuable to have a chair's input. I think it's still the discretion of the board, and I would agree with having the manager or the operations manager as part of the interview process. I think. from a managerial standpoint and experience standpoint, it could give us a whole nother perspective, an important perspective.
I would agree with Commissioner Hodges, I think. Having the township manager, operations director, as well as the chair of whatever advisory board we'd be interviewing for sit in on the interviews, maybe ask questions, but also recognizing that ultimately it's the five of us that make the decision. We vote, we select candidates. I think it would be valuable, though, to have their perspective.
So potential wording would be to invite the chairperson, but their attendance shall not be required because they may not want to attend.
I think that's fair.
Chairperson or designee.
Or designee, and township manager or designee. Same, same language.
And they can participate in the interview.
Right.
Okay.
That being said, if you want me to attend, I'll attend, that's for sure. But I don't have the ability to say no like the, like the chairperson.
But to Commissioner Roth's point, I would clarify with that language to remind that it is the Board of Commissioners that has the responsibility to make the appointments.
So if we go to page five, and this is the section that talks about database shall contain the minimum following information, and it goes down to basically the, may consider the following criteria. So this is criteria of the candidate and candidate's background and resume. So I just, it doesn't have to be listed here because you also say that this doesn't, isn't necessarily extensive. But I know that one of the things that's important to me, depending on the board, and I would put the planning commission, certainly the zoning hearing board in this category, in my mind, anyway, the willingness to get the training to become knowledgeable for the responsibility that they're volunteering for. Some come with that, some don't. Certainly, any kind of background can be supplemented and tailored to what are the requirements in South Whitehall. So I would just propose that we put F, willingness to get training, but it's not anything that we have to do if the board doesn't feel this is of value. It's just a question that I know that I've asked in the past and will continue to ask.
Devil's advocate, at their expense or the township's expense?
I would, me personally, if it's training for the position that we selected them for, at the township's expense. I don't know that all these training courses are fee based, but if they are.
The other.
What do you think of that?
I think that we have to look at it as a budget item.
Here's my.
If the township is going to.
We don't have a.
Which we don't have a line.
Here's my thoughts on that. There's not a prescribed way of becoming educated for either the planning commission, planning commission, zoning hearing board, any of the advisory boards. But a question may be posed to Commissioner Osborne's point. You know, are you willing to educate yourself on the duties, responsibilities, topics that maybe come before you in whatever form that may be? That may be a prescribed, paid for planning course. That may be simply engaging in meetings with township staff, reading, you know, Pennsylvania municipalities' planning code, handbooks available online. I think if we're going to add this to this resolution, it would be, you know, criteria along the lines of, are you willing to become educated or educate yourself on relevant topics rather than requiring applicants to partake in a certain course from a certain other entity? Just having that as a general criteria. Is that what you're getting at, Commissioner Osborne?
It is, actually, yeah.
The other, the other factor of that is when we do interview people, individuals for a specific committee. I'll give you, for instance, if we were looking for somebody in public safety, or the public safety committee, it's probably not going to be somebody who's a botanist. They're not going to come and apply for that position and say, yeah, I love trees. It just, the person we interview is probably going to be somebody, because they're going to put themselves forward to want to be in that position or at least have some form of semblance of, or knowledge of what they're going after. I mean, I don't think we've talked to anybody that, you know, I can't remember, I'm sure there has been, somebody says, I'll just take anything. You know, and that there'd be a situation where Commissioner Roth, where they'd have to educate themselves on whatever they would. But again, I think as a board, would we really put somebody in that position? I don't think so. You know, I think we're fairly fortunate at times that we do get enough applicants. Other times, you know, we're struggling to get them to fill those slots.
Yeah, I'm wondering if it's just a question that I know that we've asked it before, one of the members on our board, if that's something that we would just ask applicants based on a particular board as opposed to making it a essential requirement. Unless we're going to spell out requirements for certain advisory boards and have everyone meet a certain threshold.
You just don't want to close the pool of applicants either, but I feel that each applicant has to have the accountability to to have some type of knowledge about the board they're joining. So I think some of it is their own personal accountability, that this is what I'm going to do. I have some knowledge with this. I'm going to learn more, and this is what I'm going to apply for. But if we expect too much, we're going to narrow our pool and who, you know, people have families, they have lives. I don't want to narrow it so much that people feel like they have to have all these requirements to meet. That's just my feeling.
I think I could try to look at some language that would kind of assuage both, both comments.
Come to a balance on that?
Yes.
It's just a question. It's not, it's actually not criteria.
Right.
Okay.
I can take a look at that.
My last one is also on page five, so let me see, Roman numeral. It's midway there. And I just wanted to make sure that we're not, the intent is not this. In fact, it gets close to this or else I wouldn't be asking this, at least in my mind. It's the leadership potential. It says, recognize that the potential need for applicants to serve at leadership roles, example, chairperson, vice chairperson, secretary. The Board of Commissioners will evaluate the potential leadership abilities of applicants such as, and it goes on to say that, and B, expressed interest to serve in a leadership role. I just want to make sure that we're not suggesting in any way that the board is involved in in loading the deck in terms of, we want this person to chair that board.
Yeah, that certainly was not the intent. It was more to identify people that if they were appointed to serve, that they would have the capacity to potentially serve in those positions. Meaning like you would need, you need secretaries sometimes, you need chairpersons, you need vice chairpersons to step up to the plate. But I can simply omit that section. I mean, if that, if there's any indication that's how you read it, I don't want anyone to read it that way. So we could, we could take it out.
Some people do not want to be in those roles and yet are very good contributors. But anyway, it was a question that it led me to think, are we getting too close to thinking that we should be picking board, advisory board leadership? I certainly think we should not. That should be up to the individual board members or their board.
Understood. I can simply take that whole section out if you'd like.
I would be fine with that.
I didn't read that into that because I, the summary of the next bullet point, B, the intent of the above listed criteria is to provide a guide to the board and shall not be construed or to constitute an exhaustive list. I felt like many of the points that you included in here were to help the thought process of the board as we review and interview our candidates. But I'm open to what the board would think about leadership.
So maybe we take that out and put point G and just say, leadership potential? Just as one possible question?
Yeah, I think if there's any question that are concerned, that we're, they're trying to steer that, you know, that was no, no way, shape or form, the intent. So let me, let me try to tweak it and maybe, like you said, just, just do a blanket statement. Leadership potential is the way to do it.
Okay.
All right.
I'm done. Thank you for your time.
I only have two quick comments. The first, I want to thank you, Tom, for putting this together. I think it's really important that the board has a framework to follow, a set policy to follow. It hasn't always been the case, I know, with previous boards, and it's led to some confusion among board members and the public. So I think an eventual adoption of this ordinance in whatever form it takes will be really beneficial, not just to this board, but also to future boards and future applicants to our citizen advisory boards. The only comment I had was I noticed, I don't know the section, but when it comes time to reappoint members to citizen advisory boards, you know, they don't have to reapply, but, you know, they do have to re-interview with the Board of Commissioners. So since they're not applying, they're not submitting our standard citizen advisory board application. So I was wondering, along with the database of title, name, address of all current citizen advisory boards members, could we also have attached to that a folder with all of their original applications? I believe, I don't know if this is the practice or not, but typically when applicants submit the paperwork, I think it's only kept on file for a year. At least that's, that's what the paperwork says. So if there's potential to just have that, that way.
Yeah, we actually keep it in perpetuity.
Perpetuity, okay.
But I'll clarify that, that we will do it for all applicants and appointees.
Okay, just that way, when it comes time for the board to reappoint somebody, we can pull out their paperwork. And we already have a lot of their personal background information.
Yes, good comment. I will, I will clarify that. And I want to thank all the board members for the thoughtful comments. It will help me to come back with a revised version for your consideration.
As a follow-up to Commissioner Roth's question about a re-interviewing of incumbent appointees, I'm wondering if it might be helpful to have a form specifically for an incumbent. Maybe they've been on an advisory board for 10 or 15 years and the information from their original application likely be quite outdated. And it could potentially be structured in a way to maybe review their history on the advisory board and their hopes for the future so that we would have a glimpse of, of their history and service. It might help familiarize us with the candidate. Just a thought. As opposed to coming in cold to an interview with us not having anything but their name.
That makes sense. And yeah, that was the whole reason to have them interviewed too, because, you know, you have new elected Board of Commissioner members. They may have no idea who this person is, right? And it's good, it's a good practice, I think, for to have both parties meet each other prior to reappointment. I mean, I know I've observed that in, in my role as a manager that, you know, sometimes it's, you reappoint and you have no idea who you're reappointing. You know, the board members meeting.
And I think another thing to support Commissioner Kelly's point is during the term, which may be four years, I think it typically is, that incumbent at that point has gained four years' experience and their resume can be updated. And, you know, and used to support their renewed candidacy.
And I think building off of that, this is the practice or not, but I believe when volunteer boards and commissions members are typically asked at the end of their four-year term, I don't know if it's in writing or not, you know, do you wish to be reappointed? You could just have the questionnaire included with that kind of standard practice.
Certainly.
Any other board comment or question? Any public comment or question? Sure, Manley, if you'd come up to the microphone and give us your name and address, please, and make, please make sure the microphone is on. The little green light will turn on there. Press the button.
Yes, Manley Adjova, Jr., 1991, Molinaro Drive, Allentown, Pennsylvania. My question is, you refer to advisory boards. What about your two non-advisory boards? Is this going to apply to them too? Like you're, you mentioned the zoning hearing board, that is not an advisory board.
Right, so, so we're simply referring to them as advisory boards just for reference. So it would be all of the boards, commissions, committees, council. It would include the zoning hearing board, yes.
Okay, I was just curious.
Yeah, so that was just a way to title them. Instead of saying boards, commissions, councils, committees, every single time, just, just simply call them advisory boards. But I, to your point, I understand what you're saying because the zoning hearing board acts independently.
I think that's a great point.
Yeah, I agree. So I can, I can clarify that.
You may have a zoning hearing board applicant that says, I'm not advising you.
Thank you for your question, Manley. If we're done with this discussion, we'll go ahead and move on then. We have no motions this evening. Move on to agenda item 10, correspondence and information, our current vacancies on boards, commissions and upcoming meetings. And I'll ask our township manager to review.
Okay. Current vacancies are as follows, Civil Service Commission, there's one alternate vacancy. Environmental Advisory Council, there's three vacancies. Green Advisory Council, there's two vacancies. Landscape Shade Tree Commission, there's one vacancy. Parks and Recreation Board, there's one vacancy. Zoning Hearing Board, there's three alternate vacancies for which we are currently accepting applications if anyone is interested. Upcoming meetings, details to be posted on the website. Thursday, January 5th, 7:00 PM is the zoning hearing board. Monday, January 9th, 7:00 PM, Public Safety Commission. Also on Monday, January 9th, 7:00 PM, Parks and Recreation Board. And finally, Wednesday, January 11th, 10:00 AM, Civil Service Commission. All meetings will be held here at the Township Municipal Building.
Thank you, Tom. And just a reminder, thank you for reviewing our current vacancies. As Tom indicated, we are currently looking for alternates to our zoning hearing board. So you can get that information on our website and fill out an application. But all of our boards have various vacancies as well. We invite the public to please consider serving the township. It's a great way to get to know the workings of our township and assist our board. Moving on to agenda item B, public notice, meeting schedules. Tom, would you assist with that as well?
Yes, thank you. So each year, the township is required to advertise its schedule of meetings. This has been done already, correct, Tracy? This has been accomplished. So this is just an FYI to the board. You'll notice each meeting is now listed. So it's pretty clear exactly when the meetings are now, are occurring. Any questions on that?
The only question I had, is there indication on there that each meeting will also be held virtually? Is that something we advertise?
I don't know that you need to advertise it under the sunshine law. Attorney Zader, is that, is that something we must do?
I'm sorry, would you repeat the question?
For our annual meeting notice, do we have to advertise that they are hybrid meetings?
Annual meeting notice.
Okay, that's what I thought. So the agenda needs to list it, however.
If you don't publish this way, it's necessarily published for each meeting. And I know we do that anyway, but technically, I believe, I'm sorry, you at the beginning of each year notify the public about each meeting.
Okay. So no other further action for notice is required, even though it's hybrid for other meetings?
From a legal standpoint, no. From a public awareness standpoint, that's a separate.
Okay, so if we put it on our website, advertise it on the agenda, post it that way, we're good. Very good, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to old business, agenda item 11A, Where's Dam? I'm going to call on our Director of Township Operations, Herb Bender, to please give us an update.
Yes. Both repairs have been poured. The concrete has cured correctly. They are in the process of starting to replace the gabion baskets this week. So we are still on pace for the middle to the end of January for the repairs to be done. So we are holding good on the end date. Barring we don't run into any weather or anything, it looks pretty good for us for a little while yet. So we should be able to wrap this project up this year.
Excellent, excellent. Thank you for your update, Herb. Any board comment or question? From the public? Moving on to old business, agenda item B, comprehensive plan update. Our Director of Community Development Department, Dave Manhart, would you please present?
Yes, so the update since the last meeting, we had sent the copies of the plan to the adjoining municipalities and the County Planning Agency and the school district. We've since sent them out certified mail. We have received, everybody has received their copies. I did hear from LVPC, they asked for the digital. I did hear from LVPC, they asked for the digital copies, I directed them to the website for those. The website is live, there are links to a high-res version of the plan, and there are loads of resolution version, and links to a public comment form as well. We kind of, we're waiting for the holidays to get through before we put the slider board up on the website, so it's very front and center. So that's coming, and we'll also, in conjunction with that, announce the open house prior to the January Planning Commission meeting.
And do we have a date for the open house already?
So the January Planning Commission meeting, the idea was to hold it on the 19th, from 5 to 7, so that we could be here prior to the meeting, answer any questions, if anybody comes in with questions or wants to learn more about it, we're here to answer questions.
And how are we going to advertise that open house?
So, website, we have the email list, we have Nixle, I think we can send something out on that, the Parks and Rec Facebook, and Police Department's Facebook, so we can go through the usual channels with that.
Very good, thank you, Dave. Any board comment?
Yeah, that's the night of the Phillies caravan.
The what?
The Phillies caravan, the 19th, Steel Stacks.
Maybe we'll reschedule.
I do have one question, not directly related to the comp plan, but you brought up Nixle, how are we doing with signups for Nixle?
We're doing well, so it's actually interesting, from the original Nixle wire, we have over 6,000 registries, or, but they were from the original opt-in, so as far as our specific township code opt-in, we need to do a better job of getting more people, but as long as when we're doing messages, we tested it out, if you're doing Nixle wire and our specific South Whitehall code, I think you get it either way. But we want to try to encourage people, and we just revised the website today for the QR code specific to South Whitehall, but what we're going to do when we send out messages, we'll do both at the same time, until we get more people on the specific South Whitehall new code, but it works either way. But the only problem with Nixle wire is some of the data might be, might be out of date.
The other thing that has been inputted is all the water customers, all the sewer customers, the evacuation for the Arch Street Dam has been entered, and all the refuse customers are all in that database now, also. We will be working with Jeff Kelly to get the one-mile radius for the geochemical plant and put it in there, just in case something would happen, and we could get a message out right away. But we do have pretty many people in there from being residents as customers of water, sewer, refuse, and that, so.
Excellent. And I did receive our refuse bill today, and I want to thank Tricia and staff, who, at our early December meeting, we asked our directed staff to include in the refuse mailer, so it came in my mail today, and I encourage any citizens who receive this to scan the QR code to sign up for Nixle, or if you're interested in electronic billing as well, and if you're not able to scan, you can put your name and email address and mobile number on here and send it back into the township, it's a wonderful opportunity to communicate with our residents, I encourage people to sign up if they're interested. And thank you for staff for that. Any other comment from the public? Thank you, Dave. Moving on to direction and discussion, Agenda Item A, we have Budget and Finance Committee fulfilling of former Commissioner Michael Wilk's vacancy. I'm going to turn it over to Tom Petrucci, our manager.
Yes, this is rather straightforward, basically with Commissioner Wilk resigning, he was on the Budget and Finance Committee, and we would seek direction from the board as to if you're going to nominate another participant on the Budget and Finance Committee. The meeting dates and times, we can make that flexible, because there's really no set date and time at this point, so we'll try to accommodate, we would prefer to have the meetings during the day, if possible, the way they've been held, but other than that, I think it can be very flexible.
Thank you, Tom. Are you anticipating we would still have that committee meet monthly, or?
Yes.
Okay.
Monthly, you know, if we don't need to meet one particular month, we'll simply cancel the meeting.
Okay.
But the intent would be to schedule it monthly.
Thank you. I'll open it up to the board, if there's any discussion, or anyone who would be interested in serving in this role.
I serve on that committee, and I'd like to continue serving on it.
Absolutely. Their interest from another commissioner to fill a second role?
No one else is interested, I would be interested.
Any other interest on the board besides... I would certainly nominate Commissioner Roth to serve on the Finance and Budget Committee.
I would second it.
Motion in a second on the floor, any more discussion, any public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'll abstain from that.
Very good. Motion carries four to zero with one abstention, appointing Commissioner Roth to the Budget and Finance Committee. Tom, thank you for bringing this to our agenda.
You're welcome.
Moving on to Agenda Item 13, courtesy of the floor, it's opportunity for the public to comment on any non-agenda items, is there anyone here, public or virtually, who might have? Okay, hearing and seeing none, Commissioner Hodges, did you have a comment?
I'm sorry, I'm a little late here.
No, no problem.
I just wanted to mention that we have a new senior group at South Whitehall, and we meet in the Township Building, right here in the, in the meeting room. It's the second Thursday of every month, the next meeting would be January 12, and the theme is bingo, and I'm hoping to get the word out for, is it Mr. McNamara, who is in charge of that group and very passionate about it, so I wanted to bring that up. Also wanted to ask if there's been any consideration about changing that time, a lot of seniors don't want to be dark, driving in the dark.
Yes, Josh has talked to me about that, and we are looking, we have to go through all the schedules, because sometimes this room is booked during the day, and we want to make sure we can accommodate everyone, so we are going through the yearly calendar to see if we could book it for maybe early afternoon or something like that.
Okay, so there is possibly a change for that January 12 meeting?
The 12th, we're probably going to hold tight
Okay.
For that one in the evening, but then the prior ones, we are going to look for a different time for that one.
Thank you.
How do we advertise for, or let the public know about this? Is this something we can add to our website?
We do send out on the Facebooks, it does go on the website also, and Josh does go out to some of the senior homes and pass out flyers to let them know when the events will be taking place. We have worked with Greenwald's Fire Department, also with their senior group, to see if any of them are interested in coming, also.
Excellent, very good, thank you.
And I think Parkland Press had something in, a picture of, in it, last month, yeah, it was a nice little blurb in there, yeah.
I think it's a great opportunity for our seniors to be involved and have a group to meet with, so I'm thankful for you all for making that happen, thank you. Any other comment at this time? Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 14, I need a motion to authorize payment of invoices and disbursements.
So moved?
Wait, I'll second it.
Motion is second, any discussion? Anything from the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero, there is no executive session this evening, I need a motion for adjournment. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, this meeting is adjourned, thank you.